I believe. Scheduled to be here. Welcome everyone to the remote commission meeting of November fifteen twenty one, two thousand and twenty one here at the port of Olympia. The port of Olympia is working diligently to address the threat posed by COVID nineteen to Thurston County, the state of Washington and the United States. On March sixteen, two thousand and twenty twenty, the commission adopted resolution two thousand and twenty dash oh three. Authorizing certain emergency powers in light of the COVID nineteen outbreak, including invoking applicable emergency exemptions to the notice requirements and location restrictions. Of the open public meetings act. Pursuant to that resolution, the port of Olympia commission is conducting today's meeting remotely. The port is following the guidance from Thurston County Health Department to take all efforts to prevent the spread of this virus and is acting in the interest of the safety and welfare of the public. The community and our employees to limit its spread. So. We have an agenda in front of us. I'd like to propose an amendment to the agenda. I'd like to make a motion that we add. An item in between items one and two, and that item would be called Oyo Hotel Discussion. That would be in between the capital investment plan and upcoming topics. So do I have a second for that motion?
I'll second that.
For the purpose of discussion.
So it's been moved and seconded and before we vote, is there any discussion?
Yes, when I brought this up at our last meeting. Staff advised us that we should discuss this only in executive session, if at all, because. There may be legal issues.
Well. Thank you, Commissioner, for that comment. I don't quite feel the same way. So. The same as staff on this issue, I think it's safe to talk about it in general terms, so it's been moved and seconded to add agenda item. Two, which is Oyo Hotel Discussion. Um. All in favor, please say hi.
Hi.
Hi. Well, thank you again, Commissioner Zeta for bringing that up, and I think that commissioners are advised to keep that in mind as we. Have a brief discussion about that, and since it's my topic, I'll lead it off when we get to that, but meanwhile, we have. Item number one, which is the two thousand and twenty two budget and capital investment plan and tax levy and our own Matt Peach is presenting. Hi, Matt.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm Matt Peach, Senior Administrative Services Manager. Next slide, please. Today's agenda includes review and our upcoming schedule, the capital investment plan, our two thousand and twenty two budget overview. Operating cost analysis, our tax levy and on operations, and lastly, any questions? Next slide, please. We have held budget briefings on October fourth, eleventh, eighteenth, twenty fifth, and our public hearing occurred on November eighth of this year. Today, we will, we have a work session for review of our two thousand and twenty two operating budget, capital investment plan and tax levy. And next Monday, the twenty second, we'll have our final adoption of our two thousand and twenty two operating budget, capital investment plan and tax levy. Next slide, please. Reviewing our two thousand and twenty two capital budget, we have total expenditures of two point eight seven million. Expected grant funds of eight hundred and sixty one thousand, leaving tax, leaving funds from the port reserves of two million, ten thousand. Next slide, please. At our last meeting, there was a request for further information regarding the Marina Electrical Project. In two thousand and nineteen, we had an asset assessment that identified three hundred electrical pedestals as end of life with an estimated replacement cost of nine hundred thousand dollars. Our current focus has been on replacing pedestals at the permanent more insights. In two thousand and twenty, we had capital, we had expenditures of fifty thousand dollars of the approved seven hundred thousand. In two thousand and twenty one, we have three hundred seventy three thousand of capital expenditures of the approved four hundred ninety eight thousand. And our requested capital expenditures in two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty two of two hundred ninety two thousand. Resolved in total cost replacement and refurbish, refurb, refurbishment of the pedestals of seven hundred fifteen thousand with an expected life of twenty years. Next slide, please. Reviewing our operating budget, there's been no change from previous discussions. Our operating income results in two point two three eight million. Adding depreciation creates a net loss of one point six million. Next slide, please. Comparison of our two thousand and twenty actual result, results, our two thousand and twenty one budget and our two thousand and twenty two budget. Our two thousand and twenty one budget had an income before depreciation of two point two one million. Our two thousand and twenty two budget has net income before depreciation of two million, two hundred thirty eight thousand. Next slide, please. Reviewing our airport budget, we have operating revenues of three point three nine million, expenses of two point two seven million. Income before depreciation of one point one two million. Adding depreciation with net income of one hundred fifty six thousand, and our airport capital investment plan is a hundred and seventy thousand dollars. Next slide, please. In our last meeting, there was addition, there was a request for additional information regarding our increase to our operating expenses. Specific to the airport, we have seventy five thousand dollars of an airport master plan. Ten thousand dollars for additional security costs. Twenty five thousand dollars of summer help. Twelve thousand dollars of environmental monitoring, our insurance increase was nine thousand to the airport. We have budgeted three quarters time for the recruitment process for a senior airport manager. In our allocation of. Salary costs primarily and maintenance costs to the Clean Water Center of sixty three thousand and forty thousand dollars of additional costs to the airport. Next slide, please. Looking at the Swanton Marina specifically, we have operating revenues of four point one million. Operating expenses of three point seven million. Net income before depreciation of four hundred twenty nine thousand, adding depreciation creates a loss of two hundred twenty thousand. And our Swanton Capital Investment Plan is four hundred sixty three thousand. Next slide, please. The increase to our operating costs at the, at Swan Town are fifty five thousand for a five year. Capital planning project for integrated peninsula. Increased security costs of fifty thousand. Inflationary cost of fuel of two hundred twenty thousand. We saw a dramatic increase in our insurance costs over the last several years of fifty seven thousand. And allocating some adjustments and allocations for salaries and benefits of seventy thousand. Next slide, please. Review of our marine terminal budget results in operating revenues of four point, five point two million, excuse me, operating expenses of four point six seven million. Income before depreciation of five hundred thirty one thousand. Income after, not loss after depreciation of one point two million, and our marine terminal capital investment plan is eight hundred seventy thousand. Next slide, please. Additional costs at the marina this year are a hundred fifty thousand for a master site planning. We had security cost increase of forty five percent. Additional inflationary costs of fuel and lubricants. Servicing costs for scales and gate repairs of ten thousand and sixty five thousand dollars respectively. Some tire replacements of sixty thousand. We saw insurance cost increase of fifty two thousand and our longshore labor of forty two percent. Next slide, please. Review of our real estate and business development budget, we have operating revenues of one point six million, expenses of one point four million. Net income before depreciation of a hundred fifty six thousand, adding depreciation creates a loss of two hundred six thousand. And our real estate capital investment plan is six hundred and seventy five thousand. Next slide, please. The costs allocated for an integrated peninsula planning here at real estate business union is thirty seven thousand five hundred. We had allocation of repairs and maintenance costs of twenty five thousand. Insurance cost increased nine thousand and allocation of salaries and benefits increased forty three thousand. Next slide, please. Reviewing our maintenance expenditures, services and contracts that were once found. Under outside professional services are shifting to an in-house services, including landscaping costs, painting services. And HVAC preventative maintenance. There's been a shift in job function of responsibility for project and contract management. RFQs, task orders and scope of work and development. Internal management of asset management and work order systems. This is a system and function that requires investment and takes time to develop and implement. Next slide, please. Some of the projects that have been undertaken internally internally are as follows. And I won't read them all. In the past, these projects would have been outsourced. The benefits of these programs are not always quantified in monetary savings, but also in timeless. Transitioning from break and fix systems to a preventative maintenance plan, prioritizing work and projects and targeting expenditures to specific jobs and projects. Next slide, please. Review of our tax levy, and this is an updated slide using the finalized values from Thurston County. The proposed levy without the one in percent increase is seven million, ninety four thousand. And if we add the one percent increase, the result is a tax levy of seven point one six three million. Next slide, please. At our last meeting, there was a crest, request for additional analysis of our tax levy. As you can see, our mileage rate was point one seven zero five in two thousand and twenty two. And it decreased to one point one five or point one five one five, depending on which tax levy we pursue. And this is primarily a result of the ports percentage of tax driven and decreasing as a total percentage across the county. Using the two thousand and twenty twenty mileage rate with a median home value as compared to two thousand and twenty two. We see the ports portion of tax room is decreasing from the median home value. Electing not to take the one percent results in a decrease of fifty five cents, assuming the median home value. Countywide. Next slide, please. Review of our tax levies is the first column is without the one percent, the second column includes the one percent. And in order not to deficit spend for the first column. I read, I took out the Lacy Maker space of ten thousand, community solar costs of ten thousand. I decreased the harbor patrol cost from thirty six thousand to thirty three thousand. And I decreased the small cities budget from forty thousand down to thirty thousand, resulting in that. Net positive, not, no positive or negative as a result of the tax levy funds. And next slide, please. And with that, take questions.
Thank you, Matt. Probably the. Commissioners have questions and. You know, this has been a really good process, a lot of back and forth and. Commissioners, this is our last discussion before we actually vote on this at a port commission meeting, so I'd like to again do a round robin. Say five minutes each, but we'll do as many round robins as we need to answer your questions. I believe we have. Eighty minutes allotted to this agenda topic, so. Commissioners, do you have questions and who would like to go first? Oh, I see Commissioner Z, do you have your hand up?
Thank you, Commissioner Downing. Thank you, Mr. Peach, for that. That review and thank you for the extra information you've provided to us. I want to go to commission special projects, since that's one of the few things that our discussion will. Actually potentially have make changes. Can we go to that slide that has the commission special projects, please? So on this slide, it says commission expenses four hundred and twenty six thousand, however, on. Page three of the detailed draft that you shared with us for last week's meeting. It says commission special projects are three hundred and three thousand. So I'm wondering what the difference is and if we can see more detail on the commission projects.
So special projects, we have seventy five plus seventy five.
We've got three hundred and three thousand in last week's. Non-operating expenses on page three of the detailed budget, we've got four hundred and twenty six, which is over, which is a hundred and twenty three thousand difference.
Well, the commission expenses four twenty six from the commission expense. Budget, the special projects is part of the. Is broken out in both non-ops and the commission expense, so I would need to bring up last week's. Presentation, which I can certainly do.
But. So I'm just trying to see. I'm just trying to understand the difference between the three oh three and the four twenty six.
The real, the really should, there's, there's not a difference, so I'm not sure on the math, but regarding the commission expense of four forty six from previous presentations. It's four twenty six on this particular slide, and then if you add the maker space as well as the committee solar of ten thousand each, that'll get you to the four forty six from previous presentations.
No, I'm, last week it was three oh three, three hundred and three thousand on page three of the detailed budget.
Well, let's see here. I don't have that in front of me, so I will pull it up. So are you talking about the specific, the equivalent slide, Commissioner?
I'm, it's not a slide, it's the detail, the draft budget that was provided to us last week on November eighth. Draft, November eighth, page three, the top of the page says income statement, two thousand and twenty two budget. And it's halfway down, it says non-operating expenses and. Near the bottom of that page, it says commission special projects, three hundred and three thousand, six hundred and forty two.
Well, I, I, well, I need to pull it up, but I suspect it's a combination of a different cost that are presented separately on this particular slide. And so there's a total, but I will need to find that specific amount.
Yeah, something's different. Something's different by a hundred and twenty three thousand dollars, so. Not sure what that is. But let's look in particular at the centennial events. I believe that the commissioners agreed last week. To reduce the centennial events to thirty eight thousand, not fifty thousand.
Well, let me just say, Commissioner Z, on that topic, so yes, you did, but then. Then I made a motion and it was seconded and approved to take. Twelve thousand from community events, bringing it back up to fifty, so I'm a little concerned also because it's one of my questions, but ties in with yours. That community events was supposed to be reduced by twelve and that twelve would go to centennial events, making it fifty. That's my recollection.
So. As I, I agree with you, Commissioner Downing, that. We agreed to reduce the centennial events to thirty eight thousand, which was Commissioner McGregor's suggestion, and he and I agreed on that last time. I don't remember about the community events going into that. My concern here is that we not zero out community solar. We agreed last year to fund community solar by ten thousand and Commissioners Downing and McGregor removed that at the last minute when I was out sick. And I want that ten thousand restored for community seller.
Well, okay. I'll just say that in general, I support that Commissioner Zeta, but. Let's go through at least one round robin because other commissioners might have comments on the same tax levy uses.
But I'd really like to get, I'd really like to get responses from my fellow commissioners at this point because. I have heard you, Commissioner Downing, give a lot of lip service to green initiatives. Our POCAC has recommended that we fund community solar and do you support ten thousand for community solar or not?
Well, Commissioner Z, lately you've been doing so well with. Treating me with respect and I appreciate that, but try not to use the phrase lip service when you're talking about me, please. And but in general, and specifically, since you want my comments about this page. You know, I support ten thousand for community solar, ten thousand for. Lacy Maker space and the whole forty thousand for small cities, so I think we've got some work to do, but again. I'd like to do a round robin. Can we go around Robin and then you come back and circle back to your additional questions because. We've been talking for about seven minutes so far.
You have taken some of my time and I have only one question. I have one. My one question is community solar. I would like my fellow commissioners input on this.
So when we get done with the round robin, we can always have this further discussion on this, but I want to point out that at the last meeting, we asked staff to. Take the two thousand and twenty two budget without the one percent. And by taking the twenty two, twenty twenty two budget without the one percent, they had to reduce some areas in order to get it down to match the seven million and ninety four thousand dollars. That would be representative of the taxes collected. So that's what it appears they have done. I don't want to read or say, put words in Matt's mouth, Matt's mouth, but I think that from looking at the list that's before us here. On slide twenty, that's exactly what it looks like, so. We were at, they were asked to do that and they came back with that. So that, that's the result of their best guess, not knowing as commissioners what we're going to try to guess, so. They've just shown us where in order to get to that bottom line, total use of taxes to a, a zero of seven. Point zero nine four thousand. They've had to take some things out of there now, so we have a determination to make on whether we, what we want to put back in. And that's what the discussion will be today for the final presentation on Monday. Now I look back on. Slide. Twenty four of the tax levy uses from last, our last meeting and the commission expense. Was four forty six. I could not find the page Commissioner Zeta was looking at and. I've brought up the presentation from the last meeting, so I could not find that page in there. But anyway, I, I think that we, if we're going to. I fully agree with doing small cities at what we talked about and the. Lacy Maker space and the community solar, keeping those in. And if we're going to do that, then we have to take a look and discuss about the one percent because that's how we're paying for it. So I'll just leave it at that from what I can tell. I'm done, Commissioner Downing, thank you.
That's all the questions you had today, Commissioner McGregor, so I'm passing the torch to you from Zeta to McGregor. So do you have anything else or do you want me to?
No, go ahead. I, I made my comments on, on what I saw, so.
Okay, thank you. Matt, can we go to slide eleven? Page eleven. So. Oh, my goodness, two hundred and twenty thousand inflationary cost of fuel, so that's the entire fuel budget, I presume. And is this, I presume this is for the fuel dock.
That's correct. Are you still with us, Commissioner Downing? Commissioner Downing had noted that he had some power issues with his. Computer connection and it appears we may have lost Commissioner Downing. So I'm going to move ahead to the next question, the next step in the round robin, and when Commissioner Downing returns. Will. Get back to his question.
Oh, thanks, Commissioner Zeta. Turns out I have my, my. Computer unplugged and it usually gives me a warning, but not this time. Sorry for that delay. Okay. So thanks, Matt, for that explanation. Can we go to page slide thirteen? And so. Main gate repairs in the middle of the page. Main gate repair sixty five thousand. I didn't know there was a gate there, so do you have any idea what that's about?
I'm not exactly sure. I think it's on the backside of, close to where the, I'm not sure the street, but close to the backside of Hearthfire Grill where there's a gate over there that's. A secure access point. I believe that's it, but I would have to get back to you. I'm not exactly.
I can answer that, Commissioner Downing.
Go ahead, Rudy. Thanks.
The main gate, the gatehouse where you come through is an electric gate and just like many of our gates at the airport at the Marine Terminal. Those are very expensive to maintain in this case, in my, as I recall my discussions with Len. That, that gate is at a point where it needs the repairs and that's the amount of money that is estimated and, and certainly it is when it's on and. And so I've said something incorrect, feel free to come on, but I believe that's it.
Oh, I see. Thank you. And what about on the same slide, longshore labor up forty two percent, so that's a big increase and that's not a. I presume that's not a contractual increase, but rather. Much more longshore labor due to increased business at the Marine.
That's my understanding, that's my understanding, yes, Commissioner.
Thank you. Can we go to slide fifteen? So. Salaries and benefits, forty three thousand, so I'm not really sure. I'm curious what that is because it's only about three, maybe four people. I don't know. I, I, can you explain that salary and benefits adjustment allocation?
Sure. Each year we try to do an allocation based on where the resources are spent, so this would include maintenance costs relating to the maintenance and repairs at the. At the various real estate locations, also allocations based on where people might be spending their time this year for. Some contract management and that type of stuff, project management.
Oh, I see, so it could be more allocation and salary and benefit adjustment is what you're saying.
That's correct, yeah.
Okay, next slide, please. I'm trying to go fast, use up my five, not going over my five minutes. On this one, at the bottom of the slide, it says. Manager plus asset database, et cetera. So. Maybe I've forgotten this, Sam, but are we hiring a project manager of some sort?
No, I can adjust that, Commissioner. The manager plus database is the new system that we're using to be able to take all of the port assets and put them in one electronic location. And basically take everything from the asset assessment and, and put it into one system and now we can work toward. Not only the corrective maintenance, but preventive maintenance throughout for all of our assets at the port. It's a very large task and this is our first year, we're probably, as I recall, discussions with. Alicia, we're about seventy percent completed with that and then we're also using that as our new electronic port wide work order system. And that enables us to track all of the manpower and costs associated with our assets.
Oh, I see. Wonderful, wonderful. Okay, yeah, I missed, misread that perhaps. I thought it was a person, but it's actually a piece of software called.
Manager plus, that's correct. Manager plus is the program.
Well, I see my five minutes are up, so I'm going to turn it back to. Commissioner Zeta for a second round robin, if, if she'd like.
Yes, I do have additional questions, thank you. And just for my, for everyone's reference, the figures that I was referring to earlier. Come from our, the budget details were provided to us last Monday. They, they came to us just a few days before the. They, they came to us just a few days before the meetings, so I understand if not, everybody had time to go through them last week, but they start on page 100 of last week's packet. And I will be referring to those today, since we have now had a little more time to go through those. But first to today's packet, I want to thank.
Can I interrupt you for just a minute? The 303,000 is a combination of the following numbers.
Hold on, hold on, the 303,000 again was in last week's packet on page three of the budget details. Is that right? For the commission project, right?
Yeah, it's, it's part of the total budget for non-operating. It's a line item in the non-operating budget.
And how does that relate to the 140 something thousand that we saw today?
Well, I will tell you what makes up the 303,000. That's the community and it's from a prior budgets, community events and promo staff, which is 47,000.
Hey, Matt, I really appreciate you looking this up. And could we look at that commission project slide again as you're explaining this? That would help us focus our attention. Thank you.
Okay, so the 303,000 is, and, and again, this is a prior budget. So it's not going to be tied apples to apples at the moment because we made a couple of changes. But it's a combination of the community events, which was 47,000 previously. The small cities program of 40,000. Redistricting of 75,000, excuse me. Centennial events of 76,000. And strategic planning of 65,000.
Okay. So there were, some of those were higher and the, and the Makerspace and Community Solar were not included. Is that right?
They are included. Let's see here. Those are included in the commission budget itself. And so under, I forget the, the subheading, but those are a separate budget within the commission budget. So this is a, this slide combines both the commission budget as well as the non-operating special events, special projects.
So that's, that's, that's a little clearer. You're right. It's apples to oranges. And thank you for clarifying that. So Commissioner Downing, I would like to resume with my questions now. So my five minutes will start now, please. Let's see. Matt, I want to thank you for reporting the, what did you call it? The expense explanations for all of the business units, the airport, clean water, real estate, marina, marine terminal, except for maintenance. We do not have expense explanations for maintenance. Instead, we have efficiencies and initiatives. Without expense explanations, we are comparing apples to oranges in, in a new way. So I re-looked at the budget details that you kindly provided for us last week. And I found some information about the maintenance expenses, which we started to discuss. And these begin on page two of the budget details from last week. That's the page 102 of last week's packet. Maintenance expenses, salaries increased from 758,000 to 964,000 maintenance salaries. That's a big increase, even though we lost a senior maintenance staff member, Jack Marigan. Outside professional services has an enormous increase from 22,000 to 145,000. That's a factor of almost seven times higher. Maintenance and repairs increased by a factor of two from 74,000 to 143. And outside professional services increased, doubled from 188 to 377. So if we go to the maintenance benefit slide that you gave us here today, could we go to that?
You have the slide number?
It's slide 17.
Thank you.
Program efficiency, efficiencies and initiatives. So we've got 85,000 here, 30,000 there. But when we look at the increased costs associated with maintenance, we have hundreds of thousands, hundreds of thousands here, hundreds of thousands there, adding up to about a million dollars in increased maintenance budget. And we do not have before us today the expense explanations for maintenance as we do for the other areas. So we really don't have a complete picture. We're getting, we're being told, oh, these are the benefits of maintenance, but we're not seeing the costs. And the costs are increasing a lot. So I think we still need to take a closer look at what's going on with maintenance.
Commissioner, would you like an explanation?
I would like to see in black and white expense explanations for maintenance. I'd like to see a slide that parallels the expense explanation slides that we have for the other areas. We're not seeing that information here. So a verbal explanation will not, isn't something we can hang our hat on. We need to see it in black and white so we can compare apples to apples and be able to study what is really going on with maintenance. So this is something we need to see for next week. So we have a clearer understanding of what's going on with maintenance. I expect that we can get our 1% tax increase worth of savings out of maintenance, $69,000. And then we won't have to nickel and dime the community projects that we all value, that we started today discussing. I'd like my fellow commissioner.
I just had a question, Commissioner. Before we attempt to provide you what you're asking, can I perhaps give you a little bit of a verbal explanation on why you're seeing things the way you are?
Sure.
Okay. Well, most of the maintenance expenses you're going to see are in all of the business unit budgets. And Matt can get a little bit further into detail when I'm done talking. But the, this, because this is the first year where we've made the shift from what traditionally, where you saw maintenance costs in planning environmental and, and oh, 700 in years past. We now have a small, general administrative maintenance budget, but all, most of the maintenance costs are within the business units, which is why you saw the explanation slides that you did. And I suspect we, we can do our best to try and provide you an explanation slide at the next meeting. But as you indicated, we're going to be trying to compare apples and oranges because this is the year we made the transition in our maintenance section that was authorized by the Port Commission for this year's budget. So Matt, if you had anything that I've said incorrectly, feel free to, to add to that.
Yeah, I would just point out, and, and I can't go line by line in the budget, but I will say that the 2021 budget for maintenance cost was 2.3 million. For 2022, the total is 2.49 million. It is an increase of 162,000. So without going into, I don't have the detail in front of me, but you're talking about 162,000 increase in maintenance costs budgeted. And so while the outside professional services did increase, the other operating expenses decreased by almost an equivalent amount. So I, I would know, you need to go into detail to determine if they're budgeted differently or where the, where that allocation is different.
And Matt, am I, am I also understanding correctly that the difference between the operating budget and the non-operating budget? So it's, it's not like you're going to be able to, to exchange those dollars?
The only additional addition for 2022 that was not part of 2021 is that the facilities budget, there is a facilities budget this year that reflects additional supply costs, training benefits and support for our individual maintenance staff. So there is an additional roughly, and I don't remember the exact number, but it's roughly $120,000 of additional budgeted items for them.
So I have a question, Matt. You said the maintenance budget is only 100 and some thousand dollars higher, but on page three of the budget details that you provided last week, the total maintenance expenses, and this is not for any particular unit, but maintenance in general goes from 1.8 million to two and a half million. And then there are also maintenance expenses associated with each business unit.
So, so what I'm looking at on page, I'm assuming it's the same thing you're looking at. I have 2021 adopted budget of 2.3 million.
Hold on, what page are you on? What page of the draft of the budget details that you gave us last week?
I'm on, I, it doesn't, I'm not sure how it.
It's page three.
Yeah, you were, you were quoting salaries and benefits. So it's the next page after that, that page.
So maintenance expenses starts on, maintenance expenses in general starts at the bottom of page two and continues at the top of page three. Is that what we're looking at?
Yes.
Okay. And you were saying about that?
I, I, I was saying that the 2021 adopted budget is 2.3 million for maintenance. And the proposed budget for this year is 2.49 million budget.
2021 end of year budget is 1.8 and the end of, and the 22, 2022 budget is two and a half million. So.
That's correct. And so for 2020, that was pre our maintenance, our new maintenance unified maintenance department that came into effect this year. So if you're comparing budget to budget, 2021 to 2022, it's additional 160,000.
Oh, so 160,000, or if you look at the actual budget, end of your budget, it's more than half a million dollars higher. And then in addition, each unit has maintenance expenses listed. For example, well, they're all higher. We could go over the details, but they're all higher. And I don't know if that's what adds up to the 0.6 million dollars extra, or if that's an addition.
These are combined numbers across the entire port.
For example, Swat Town alone, actual 2021, from, yeah, I guess it, it must be already added up. So it's closer to a million than it is 200,000, if you look at the actual 2021 budget. So we're, we're looking at tens of thousands here and tens of thousands there in efficiencies and initiatives. But we're looking at 0.6 million total increase. So I don't want to belabor this point, but there are, there are some unanswered questions and concerns and we're not seeing.
Commissioner Zeta, it's eight minutes.
So Mike, my, I, I will return to my original request. We need to see the expense explanations for maintenance as we have, as we see slides for every other area in this slideshow. We're only seeing the benefits of maintenance. We're not seeing the expenses of maintenance in the slideshow. And if we've got 0.6 million dollar increase, a 10% trimming there would save the 1% tax increase.
Okay, we're going to keep moving here around robin. So I'd like to go hear what our executive director has to say and then go to McGregor, Commissioner McGregor.
Thank you, Commissioner. And as Director Rudolph was alluding to earlier, I think it's important to, to continue to remind the commission of the distinction between the operating and the non-operating budgets. And so, you know, what, what we put up for the uses of the tax levy, that, that, and any type of potential cost cutting measures on, on the operating budget does not automatically transfer to the, the non-operating budget. And so they, they, they are distinct in their, how they're, how they're accounted for and distinct in where their, their revenues come from. So I, I just wanted to, to make sure that the expectation wasn't that we could quote, save some money in, in maintenance and then be able to pay for things on the, on the non-operating budget. They are, they're two different distincts way of, of accounting.
Thank you, Sam. Okay, Commissioner McGregor, you're up. Anything?
My only comment is that what you're comparing is the end of year projected is still a projection till we have December's numbers in. We, we assume it's going to come in about 1.8 billion. But the adopted budget for that year was 2.3 million. And what Matt is saying is this year it's only 2.4. And historically, while we put a budget out there, we try to stay under the budget at all costs if we can. And that's exactly what you're seeing by the difference between 21's budget and 21's projected. So are things that don't get spent during the year that are planned to be spent, but don't necessarily. We don't operate like the US government in that if we don't spend it, we won't get it reallocated the next year. So I don't believe in that kind of budgeting. And I think what the staff has done is, is trying their best at, at what are projections going to be based on 21? And what it will be based on going into 22. And so I'm not going to pick apart every little line item on this thing. I think that they presented us a budget. We just, and, and I know it's Commissioner Zeta's reluctance to raise the 1%, but you know, inflation is just eating us alive. What was it in October? 9%? I heard something like that. So I've heard a lot of big figures and we're going to see some more big figures as we move forward into 22. Supply issues, inflation, cost of fuel, all that stuff is not going to go down. I'm done. Thank you.
I thank you, Commissioner. Well, I agree with parts of what Commissioner Zeta said and parts of what Commissioner McGregor said. I don't think, I don't think our role is to get into the nitty gritty of the maintenance budget and how much for this project and how much for that. But I do want to agree with Commissioner Zeta in part in that over the past year, my recollection is we talk about outside professional services and we talk about maintenance and we talk about the shift from outside professional services to maintenance. And, you know, we're saving money and there's a list of things we save money on and that's great. However, you know, I do think, you know, I'm, I'm not going to ask questions of Matt or Sam about the detail, but I will make the observation that maintenance budget is up and outside professional services is up. And depending on if you look at the 2021 budget, my calculations, you know, I've done my, you know, homework here on this piece of paper. And my calculations are that if you combine outside professional services and maintenance and take the, the more optimistic picture, which, what is the increase in 2022 budget versus 2021 budget? It's up 24% when you combine those two categories. So outside professional services is up a lot. Maintenance, as you said, somebody said, is up about 200 grand. So that's fairly, I guess, reasonable. But those, that's all I'm going to say about that because my opinion is that taken together, those things are up. And, and revenue is up, that's good, but expenses are up even more with our remaining 20 minutes, we're going to have to start talking about the tax levy. You know, I'm pretty, given the fact that, that I don't get down in the details, but I feel like commissioners can talk about all day long about the tax levy uses because that's what we vote on. You know, I feel like we need to make up the community solar 10,000. We need to make up the Lacy Makerspace 10,000. And, and maybe even the small cities 10,000. So I feel like that can be made up somehow. I'd like to see it made up. I can tell you right now that, well, I won't go there, but right just yet. I just want to say that given all this, I think there is some overlap, Sam. There is some overlap between non-operating and operating because when you talk about environmental expense of 1.453 million, well, somebody's doing. well, somebody's doing that work. So that's operations. Somebody's getting paid an hourly rate and, and we're buying things to do that work. And and that's a big number, 1.453. We can't do anything about the principal and interest expense right now, but that other number environmental expense, you know, I think we can do something there. And as, again, as I said, community events, I know we voted on that and I know that we reduced that by 12,000. So I'd like to see that in there. And, you know, I'd like to see those three things back on there, community solar, Lacy Maker Space and, you know, I don't really want to reduce the small city. So, so with that, you know, I kind of think that we focus on this page and, and start talking about the tax levy.
Commissioner Downing, if I might point out that the community events, if you pull that back up, it was reduced from 47,000 to the, to the current 35. Okay. So, and you, and you are correct, you did make a motion, which passed to that effect. And so we moved that, that 12,000, reducing the community events from, from 47 to 35 and then moved it down to the centennial events, increasing that from 38 up to 50.
Okay, thank you. Good. Thank you. So at this time, I'd like to, commissioners, can we focus on tax levy uses and your comments on the tax levy itself because staff has to put together a final budget for our vote for next, the next commission meeting. What do you think, Commissioner Zeta?
I agree, we should focus on that. And I agree with you, Commissioner Downing, that the big increases in maintenance and outside professional services are a concern. And I agree with you that there's overlap between operating and non-operating. There's considerable flexibility in budgeting at the port. We've seen how things get moved around. In particular, outside professional services on page two of the budget details that Mr. Peach provided us last week, outside professional services have increased nearly a million dollars. They were budgeted at 1.86 last year. They're projected to come in at 1.83 this year and they're budgeted for 2.7, over 2.7 million for next year. That's nearly a million dollar increase for outside professional services. At the same time, stormwater fees, our income has dropped by at least 50%. It was budgeted at, we were supposed to get over a million dollars in stormwater fees last year. It looks like we're going to get 800 something thousand by the end of the year. Next year, we're looking at getting only 482,000. So less than 50% of what we expected to get in stormwater fees last year. We're also getting about a 50% hit in property and land rents. So we're taking a hit on some of our major moneymakers and we're paying a lot more in some important areas. So what would really help us make informed decisions is if we had our financial measures, if we had a report on our financial measures. Commissioners agreed years ago that we need to see our financial measures to help us make smart financial decisions. We haven't. We don't know what our loss before the tax levy is. I appreciate that Mr. Peach gave us a great big Excel spreadsheet, multiple sheets earlier today, listing the debt, the details of the debt. That's going to take a little time to adjust. And it might be possible to, for us to calculate some of the financial measures from that. But we don't really have the information we need to make smart decisions about budgeting. We need to know our financial measures. We need to know our number one financial measure loss before tax levy. And we need to know why we're spending an extra million dollars on outside professional services and losing more than 50% of our stormwater fees, among other things. And we don't know.
Commissioner McGregor, do you have any, like, talk about the tax levy or tax levy uses?
I'd like to talk about the tax levy. Yes, I'd like to move on to that.
Go for it.
Well, I, I just think that, you know, I I think that what we're seeing is that if we don't charge, charge that 1%, then there's some things that need to be reduced. If we do charge that 1%, then there's a, looks like a surplus of $36,000, which is about half of the 1% increase. So here's my question. Can we take a half a percent increase? Matt, can somebody tell me is that, can we do that as a?
Yes, you can.
So if we want to fund things that are in here, then if we take a half, then we're at about $36,000 and would fund everything that's on the list that we have originally set, including community solar, laser space, Lacy Maker Space and the small cities. So I just, you know, there's got to be something in between. And if that's the in-between, then that still doesn't, we still don't take the 1%, but we are taking a little bit. Inflation is continuing to eat away at this and it will continue to eat away. Our buying power gets reduced each year by not staying up with inflation. I'm done. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Back to me. I think I'm losing track of the order here. Yeah, I think it is. Okay, so can you turn to page 19, please? To me, this is one of the hardest things we do as port commissioners because we only do this once a year and we make a really huge decision about the tax levy and it's by no means intuitive how this all works. And we hang our hat on the milage rate and every year I seem to have a new epiphany. Okay, you ready for this year's epiphany? I will say this, that the realistically, the tax on a median value home is not a static object, meaning I Googled a couple of articles about Thurston County home prices and they went up 20% in 2021. So then what does the county assessor do with the home valuation? Well, it's certainly going to go up. I'm not sure. I doubt it'll go up the whole 20%. If that, that assessor says your home is worth 15% more and not 20%, then your money paid to the tap, to the port automatically goes from $56, I'll use round numbers, $56 to $64. And this is my math and that's what I think is going to happen. So you know, I think that the, while it's great that the milage rate goes down, you know, milage rate is not an everyday term that people talk about in conversation. What they talk about is what their home is worth. And sure, that makes you feel good. At the end of the day, oh, I've got equity in my home, but that doesn't pay your property tax bill. What pays your property tax bill is your earnings or your savings or whatever, and it's a real thing. So Commissioner McGregor, if we stand still, the property tax is going to go up considerably for for people. So we're not going to, no matter what we decide today, unless those six or eight people listening to us today, they're going to perhaps feel good about what we come up with. But the rest of the whatever number, 300,000 people that live in Thurston County are going to look and say, oh, my property taxes to the port went from six, from $56 to $64. And so it's a crazy, crazy year when you have that kind of increase in the value of your home. So and that's why, you know, I, I mean, actually, after six years of us working together, I feel like the, the property owners need a break from the port. I mean, our, our revenue is increasing and we're doing better. And I appreciate Sam's leadership and all the work the port staff has done. But I feel like we're going to get more revenue. I think that on the on one of Matt's other slides, it talks about, you know, the starting point. Anyway, so I won't get off on a tangent on that. So I just feel like prices are going to go up. Revenue is going to go up for the port anyway, without us doing anything. And I probably could be in favor of picking up not the whole 1%, but like McGregor says, not even a half a percent, but maybe a third of a percent to pick up the community solar, the Lacy Maker Space and the small cities. Now, the only one I'm really going to get behind is the community solar. So I for sure want to do that. It's up to McGregor. You know, if he thinks it's, it's important to fund the Lacy Maker Space one more year and then what was the other one? The small cities program, you know, that would cut that down to seven or eight thousand instead of 10,000 per city. So those are my thoughts, you know, on the tax levy and tax levy uses. Back to you, Commissioner Zeta, if you have any additional comments or comments on what I just said.
Thanks, Commissioner Downing. Yes, you're correct. The median value of a Thurston County home is closer to 450,000 now. And therefore, even if we don't increase our tax rate, people's port taxes are going to go up. So it's important that we not increase our tax rate any more than absolutely necessary. So if we could go back to the slide with the commission projects on, please. I agree with you, Commissioner Downing, that we must fund community solar, especially since it got axed from last year's budget. Centennial events, we agreed to knock that down to 38 last time, and I think we should get that back down. That would enable us to fully fund small cities with a little bit of extra. This is doing the budget without 1%. If we bring the scent, if we take 10,000 or 12,000 out of centennial events, we can put it into small cities. Now, how are we going to fund community solar? For one thing, it does not make sense to fund Lacy Maker Space. When Commissioner McGregor first brought Lacy Maker Space to us, our understanding was that it would be a one-time deal. Then it's going to be two years, then it's going to be three years. And it's getting to be an every year thing. As Commissioner Downing and I noted last year, that was not our understanding of our commitment to Lacy Maker Space. We funded it multiple years already. That's enough. We have reneged on our commitment to community solar. It's time to fund that.
Back to you, Commissioner McGregor.
I'm not going to spend a whole lot of time hagling back and forth over all these things because it's clear that Commissioner Zeta does not want to sponsor the Lacy Maker Space. It's clear that this community solar, I would be more in favor of a community, a solar project. Because community solar is an actual company out there doing work, if I understand it. But we don't know what that is. But what is that? There's been no project brought forward or explanation, but I'm talking, please. Thank you for not interrupting. But that, that is community solar, which is the one that I think that is doing the hummingbird project at the museum, if I'm not mistaken. But I don't really know what is that for? What is that $10,000 for? So if you want to cut Lacy Maker Space, go ahead. I, I, you know, it was my commitment to them. I'll, I'll just have to explain it. If you want to reduce the small cities, go ahead. It's completely up to you guys, but at this point, I think a half a percent is not unrealistic. And so I'll just let you two chop away as you want. Thank you.
I can, you've got a response there on this.
I can answer Commissioner McGregor's question. I'm surprised that he doesn't realize that the current project for community solar is increasing the solar panels on the farmer's market. First they did the Hands on Children's Museum and now they're doing the farmer's market. Which is of course something that the port has supported for many, many years. And it's in our interest to continue to support. And I, for the record, support fully funding the small cities program, not chopping it.
Thank you, commissioners. I think we're really close on this tax levy uses. We, we don't vote on it today, but do I have another commissioner who can give a head nod to Matt and our executive director to fund community solar and Lacy Maker Space and small cities. That'd be 10,000 for a total of 30,000. 10,000 each for a total of 30,000. And that would have to come from the smallest possible portion of that 1%. In other words, it might be 0.41%. And that would get us to a balanced budget as we're looking at it. Do I have a head nod for that type of? So I see one head nod and one not. What do you have to, sorry, executive director Gibbony?
Could, could you just enumerate that one, one more time, just so we, that we as staff are tracking your proposal?
I think we're really close on this tax levy uses. I see that at the top of the page, without the 1% at all, doesn't, doesn't quite get us there. If we then therefore want to put another 10,000 towards small cities, one more 10,000, one more year to Lacy Maker Space and 10,000 to community solar for a total of 30,000. So we'd have to take about 40% of 1% to fund those three additional things from the tax levy. And I saw one head nod from Commissioner McGregor and a, a sort of a negative head nod from Commissioner Zeta. Commissioner Zeta, you want to weigh in on this?
Yeah. Commissioner Downing or McGregor, would you support funding community solar 10,000, small cities at 40,000, reducing centennial events to 38,000? And then we've got a couple, we've got less than 10,000 that staff need to figure out somehow.
I'll respond to that. Commissioner Zeta, my recollection is that the last meeting, the last budget meeting, we already dealt with the centennial events. I made a motion, it was seconded and it passed to reduce community events from 47 to 35,000 and increase centennial events from 38,000 to 50,000. So I haven't changed that position.
I move that we reduce and tend to leave it to Commissioner McGregor's originally proposed 38,000 and put 10,000 to community solar and the remainder to small cities.
Well, I'm a little stuck on Robert's rules here, but could you, I'm going to go ahead and allow that motion. If you could restate that motion, then I'll ask for a second.
Point of order. We don't normally take action, I, action on motions in our work sessions. We tend to leave that for the regular Monday night meetings.
Well, I'm trying to provide clarity. So however you want that done, Commissioner Downing.
Commissioner Zeta, I want you to say what you had in mind again and see if you get a physical response from one of your other two commissioners.
I propose that we put centennial events at 38,000 as Commissioner McGregor had originally proposed, noting that that's considerably higher than what I had proposed. We put 10,000 of that toward community solar. And that leaves enough for small cities. Is that right? Yes, that leaves no, not quite enough, but we put the remainder to small cities. So we reduce centennial events to 38,000. We put 10 to community solar and the remainder to small cities.
Thanks for that idea Commissioner Zeta. I don't see any positive head nods on that.
That would meet your goal Commissioner Downing of not increasing Thurston County taxpayers' tax rate.
Thanks Commissioner Zeta. You know, while that's a worthwhile goal, I am a realist in terms of the port and other things going on and as I said, it's, it's a pretty darn small increase. So I feel good with that. Is that a hand up to, do you have something more Commissioner Zeta?
Well, that's, that's one way that we could get to your goal of not raising taxes by 1% and I share that goal. Do you have another way to get to that goal?
I personally would like the executive director to say, well, cut environmental expense and come up with that 30,000. That'd be my first choice, but I'm not going to, you know, I don't, I don't, I'm not in operation, so I can't make that call. That'd be my first choice. My second choice is to go for a less than 1% increase in the tax levy. And, you know, I'm sorry that there's some kind of tax barriers, you're going to see a much larger increase just due to the fact that they owned a home from 2021 to 2022. Sam, do you have some executive director Gibbony?
Yes, I just note that staff did decrease the environmental expense by, I believe it was 47,000 from the first draft to the current draft in front of you. We originally had this coming in at 1.5 million and we have, have reduced that already. Just for your information.
Okay.
Commissioner Downing, you've also noted, as have I, that maintenance expenses and outside professional services are high. And if those could be reduced and if there was flexibility, that could also save Thurston County taxpayers from this tax increase.
The Matt, just a second, Sam, Matt, could you go to slide 20, oh, on slide 20? So the hard part for me is that the wait a second. Slide 18, please. So you're starting with that number of, right in the middle of the page, 7,093. And that comes from the small additions plus the 2021 levy amount. Is that 2021 levy amount 6.936? Is that accurate or did we? I mean, tried to figure all this stuff out, but I mean, because of the fact that home prices went up. Oh, was that levy amount already set?
Yeah, correct.
So you're building off of the 2021 levy amount, but the 2022 levy amount is going to be you're missing, in my, perhaps you're missing a variable, which is the increased assessment for 2022. So you have these, these three categories or four categories, but you don't have a category for increase in property value valuation. You want to speak to that, Sam?
Sure. And I think County Treasurer Gavin could, could do a better job of explaining this, but the, or the assessor. So the, the amount of levy that, that we take is, is a dollar amount. And so it is not, then the assessor determines of how that is, is spread across the, the various properties in, in the county. But what we are limited to as a taxing district is then the dollar amount that then can increase only by 1%, unless you're taking bank capacity. And then they add in the new construction and then they have this administrative refund, re- levy thing. But so it is that, that, the, the property values going up is, is not reflected in your dollar amount. Or the commission's job is to determine the dollar amount that you wish to take with these various constraints on it.
Okay. Thanks. Thank you, Sam.
And, and if I could just clarify, I think we've got, I'm, I'm just trying to make, make sure that we're, we're tracking here as staff. So if the commission comes to some, some direction, I think Commissioner Zeta, I've got her proposal here that we increase, that decrease centennial events to 38,000, put 10,000 in for community solar and add 2,000 to the small cities program for a total of 32,000. I believe if Commissioner Downing, what, what you proposed is adding 10,000 to Lacy Maker space, 10,000 to community solar. And if we could go to the, to the next slide, Sheila. Yeah, the, the one with the details on it for all the, yeah. And
10,000 for small cities.
And then 10,000 for small cities and then taking what, whatever percentage of the, of the increase to, to, to get us to, to cover those. And do I, do I have your proposal down correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
So Commissioner Downing, would you consider an amendment to your proposal in order to save the taxpayers, reducing, removing that $10,000 on Lacy Maker space? Since Commissioner McGregor has acknowledged it's been funded for multiple years at this point.
Point of order, I said, has been funded. I didn't acknowledge that. You acknowledged and said that it had been funded for several years. So I just want to correct that record. You said it, not I. Tonight, you said it. I just said, so I'm just throwing that out.
Commissioner McGregor, is it inaccurate that it has been funded for several years?
I didn't say anything was inaccurate, except the statement that you said, I said that. I did not say that. You said that. So I just want to be on the record that it was you that said funded for several years.
So Commissioner McGregor, do you agree that it has been funded for several years?
We have talked about this Commissioner Zeta, and I told you that I thought it needed one more year because we had originally agreed to do it for three years. Then we had 2020 in the mix. And that shut down the Lacy Maker space for that period of time. They used that money that we had provided them to make masks and help with the healthcare industry when they were struggling to find protective equipment. And so anyway, that's what we had talked about and you were fine with it at the last meeting. But now you've obviously changed your mind. The other thing I would like to point out, and in 2020, we did not do the small cities project because everything was shut down. Everything had a lid on it. So we did not do 2020. So my question then becomes, we had it budgeted but never used. So where did that money go?
The fact remains that Lacy Maker space was funded for several years.
If you want to call it several, fine, call it several.
Well, yeah, Commissioner Zeta, I'm a, I'm going to thank you for your offer of an amendment, but I'm going to, given the fact that we did have COVID, you know, I'm, I'm pretty fixed on three years, but it's, I guess it's going to be four years because of COVID. And that's totally normal. And I agree that they made, I don't know how many thousands of protective mask equipment, whatever. And and then the small cities wasn't funded and Commissioner McGregor, that's why, part of the reason why we have such a great cash balance at the port. I mean, in my, in our years here, it's gone from in the neighborhood of 7 million up to 12 million. So that's, you know, really excellent work. And so I'm, I'm, I feel good. I don't want to belabor this. We need to move on with the meeting, but I, I support a tax levy just enough, just enough to cover this 30,000 deficit we're looking at in the middle column on this one. So if there are no other comments, I'm going to go ahead and move to the next agenda item. Thank you, Matt Peach, for that presentation. Thank you, Sam, for clarifying and Rudy. So the next agenda item is called the Oyo Hotel Discussion. And I apologize to spring this on you, but I mean, did we ever have a port issue? I'm sure not since the military cargo have we had two pages in the Olympian above the fold on the front page about the same port topic. And I have in front of me, I reread the letter response from the FAA to the Honorable Marilyn Strickland, Congresswoman Strickland. And I reread the letter from the FAA to Rudy. Both these were, one was dated June 29th. The letter to Congresswoman Strickland was dated June 4th. So these are just in my files. I presume everybody's got them because they came out in forms of an email. And plus the fact that we've had public outcry, you might say, and this reporter named Brandon Block, I mean, he's got a, a big issue. And, you know, I don't want to comment on the, the way those articles are written, what have you. I also spoke with, in the past few days, I spoke with Mayor Komet of Tumwater, and I spoke with Craig Chance of the Housing Authority and you know, I basically feel like we need to do the work to find out if the FAA will approve this or not. And I don't hold high hopes, but I think we need to do the legwork. I think we owe that to the community. There's two things I really care about. When you take me aside and say what my values are, and one is global warming, I'm very upset about that. And the other is the giant income inequality in this nation in particular compared to other nations. And people need housing. And so this is a great chance for to create some senior housing. I don't know if we can do it or not, but it's one of the few, the few places that the port has even come close to interfacing with a community issue. And a very large community issue as the port has certain economic development responsibilities, but you know, I feel like this piece of land, you know, we've got, you might say, two of the, two of the four parties, meaning the, the buyer and the seller, potential buyer and potential seller that are interested in moving this forward. And it depends on the only way for it to move forward is the port to talk to the FAA in a more formal fashion and say, we'd like to do this. And the FAA can then turn around and say, no way, or, you know, they'll make an exemption for us. So I think that, you know, I personally would like to see this move forward. And I'd like to, you know, rather than spring it on Sam or Rudy, I'd like them to have some time to think about it and come back and talk to us at a, a commission meeting fairly soon. I'm not supposed to say dates, but you know, like, I like, you know, for example, an estimate of cost of what this is going to take man-hours and dollars and you know, get this moving. So that's my, that's my agenda item.
Well, I would like to see it come forward because I do have some questions on some of the information. As I've gone back and looked at what we received, emails, letters and, and that type of thing. So it might be worthy of a second review because I do have some questions on some of the terminology used. So I would support putting it back on a future agenda.
About you, Commissioner Zeta?
Well, I'm surprised at this turn of events. I, I don't know if I dare get my hopes up, but I'm trying to get my hopes up. We asked port staff to look at this last spring. In May, the FAA sent port staff the list of things we needed to do to take the next step. Nearly a month later, port staff shared that with us. And despite requests, nothing happened until Brendan Block at the Olympian published an article saying, what's up? Nothing's happening. And then we tried to get it moving again and twice in the last month, two port commissioners and port staff have said, this is a no-go. Last week, Commissioner McGregor said, I'm not interested. Last week, Commissioner Downing said, let's just punt this to next year's commission. And now because of the public interest, we're looking at maybe doing something about it. That's great. It's a bit late, but hopefully it's not too late. As we move forward on this, we should tell the truth and do our best. Last week, we heard that the hotel owner had a deal on the line. And if we talked about it, it would be tortuous interference. That was not true. I talked with the hotel owner immediate, before and after the meeting, that information was not true. We were also
Commissioner Downing, point of order, point of order, I would, I would ask that you interject and have the commissioner refrain from accusing staff making false statements. We certainly have made statements based upon our knowledge of, of events. If there are different interpretations amongst the parties, that might be understandable. But I would respectfully ask that the commissioner refrain from disparaging remarks.
Yeah, point of order accepted, point of order accepted. The commissioner will refrain from inferring any kind of disparaging activity on the port, port staff. Thank you.
The article in the Olympian was correct. And that stands on its own. I will respectfully ask commissioners and staff to tell the truth and to respect the public and to respect
Yeah, point of order, Commissioner Zeta, you're, you're still doing it. Okay, please just avoid the whole subject and just please offer constructive comments for the future.
We need to operate in good faith. We have a mandate from the public. We have community partners who want to work with us on this. And we should not, and we should do our best. We should operate in good faith and try to move this forward. I appreciate the gesture tonight. Let's make it real. Let's make it real.
Thank you, Commissioner. So you know, commissioners don't schedule commission meetings. However, I'm hoping that by next Monday, you can have a, at least give us a date at which you're going to bring this forward to the commission to, to, yes, kick off a study or tell us why it's impossible.
You're directing that at the executive director?
Yes.
Yes.
Any other comments before we move on? I'd just like to say, yeah, you're correct, Commissioner Zeta. I guess you might say it's proof positive that this poor commission does listen to the public. I mean, sometimes more overtly than other times, but this is the case where, I mean, you will always have to weigh that against the port interest and the port's abilities, et cetera, et cetera. But this seems to be a case where the port can be proactive on an issue. So thank you. be proactive on an issue. So, thank you. Okay, with that, we're gonna go to agenda item number three, which is upcoming topics and agenda items. Sam, you have something for us?
Okay, again, next slide. So for next Monday, we have the Lot Memorandum of Understanding coming back to you for action as well as the adoption of the 2022 Operating Budget and Capital Investment Budget. We also have PCI Contract Extension for Action and the Resolution in Support of Thurston County Climate Action Plan from, from the POCCAC. Coming to you for advice, we will have a lease option amendment for Panatoni. And we'll also hopefully have the POCCAC report on the evaluation of non-motorized and shared transportation operations for North Point, which is one of the assignments that you gave them. Next slide.
Sam, oh, wait, wait. What happened to the five-person commission? I thought we were gonna take another look at that and bring it back.
You are correct. I will I'll make sure that that, that is corrected on our agenda.
Thank you, Sam.
Next slide. For December 6, we are planning on a presentation on the on-call contracting process. We have a presentation by Martin and Associates on the Economic Benefit Study, and then a discussion on the Capital Lake Deschutes Estuary Department of Enterprise Services questionnaire they have about decision durability. And next slide. Then for our final meeting of the year, we have a Clean Water Ground Lease for the Consent Agenda and the Lease Option Amendment for Panatoni coming back to you for action.
Can you give me a teaser about the Clean Water Ground Lease? Is that a redoing a lease or new customer?
Um, I think if we have Alan on the line, Alan, are you still on our side? Are you a panelist?
I can, I can hold on that. I'll survive.
I believe I can answer the question, Commissioner. I believe that is a tenant that we've been discussing for some time now. The, the church, I believe, is purchasing the building. I forget the name of the church, but it's ten, we've been negotiating with Alan and Clarissa.
Excellent.
Okay.
Good.
And that would, that would be a wrap for then 2021.
That will be a wrap. I'm gonna miss my fellow Commissioners. Anyway. Well, good meeting, everybody. I think we're at the end of our agenda. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Oh, wait a second, Commissioner Zeta?
Question about scheduling topics. Is the Weyer House or lease up for renewal?
That would be to Sam, probably.
Yeah, we don't, we don't have that scheduled in the near future. We are anticipating that it will be coming back before the commission in 2022.
Okay. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Don't move.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Have a good evening, everyone. See you next time.